There you are. Second time I get to see you today.
What a blessing. Would you bow your heads? Father, we thank you for today. God, I thank you for the leadership that you have assembled for this county, for the school district. God, I pray over their families that you would just bless them. I pray over every faculty and staff throughout the system. God, I pray that you would just give us a renewed fire for educating the next generation and raising them up in excellence in education. And Father, I pray that you would just give us your desires, your dreams, your plans for this community and seeing this community become better than it's ever been. And Father, that you raise up the next entrepreneurs within our system, that you will raise up the next generation of leaders within our schools, God. And I pray, Father, that you will continue to bless this great community with your favor and with your presence, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Eddie. If anyone wants to make public comment during that section, please make sure Ms. Douglas or Ms. Cormany has your public comment card.
I guess we don't have any.
Pam, do you have any agendas? Board agendas?
There's one on your...
Here it is.
It's on there.
You found one?
Yeah. Here's yours.
Okay.
He has it.
Laura's going to...
She's going to get it, but you have it.
Okay, first, on our agenda, we'll have recognition of Putnam County's high-impact teachers. Laura, are you...
Okay.
Thank you so much for letting me be here today to just discuss this wonderful group of individuals that are going to be coming up here in just a second. All of the individuals, as I call their names, these are teachers who have been recognized by the state of Florida as having exceptional data for their students over the past three years. The data is from the State Department, and what they used is their most recent three years of data from 1516, 1415, and 1314. It is really only recognizing the teachers who taught students in reading grades four through 10, and math grades four through eight, and algebra one, in eighth and ninth grade. So, we have lots of wonderful students, teachers, who have great student achievement, but these were the ones that were recognized by the state. So, if, when I call your name, if you don't mind coming up, so we can take a very large picture of all of us, it would be great. So, all right. From Melrose Elementary School, we'd like to thank Rhona Ullsbrook for being here today.
You won. Rhona.
Thank you.
And from Melrose, Bethany Parker. From Browning Pierce Elementary School, Laura Yeomans. Debra Yeomans. Kristy McDonald. And Amber Hutchinson. From Interlocken Elementary School, Melanie Club. And Mary Waltz Talbot. From Interlocken High School, Chris Wykoff. From Miller Middle School, Christopher DeLuca. Joanne Gilyard. From James A. Long Elementary School, Misty Woods. From Palacka High School, Susan Gladys. And Mary Holly. From Miller Middle, from Middleton Bernie Elementary School, Jade Hancock.
Kelly Smith?
I'm getting there, hang on. From Kelly Smith Elementary School, Teresa Hickenlooper. And Megan Morris. From Mosley Elementary School, Amanda Winters. And Shawna McBey. Also, from Kelly Smith Elementary School, Paula Simmons. Sorry, Paula. From Aquila Elementary School, Marion Mathis. And from QI Roberts Junior/Senior High School, Kristen Hudson. And Morgan Reed. Thank you. And from James A. Long, Deanna Blitch. That's what I get for not doing them in alphabetical order. I was trying to get you to stand up here with your friends. So, I'm sorry. All right, thank you, guys, for being so wonderful, and we appreciate the Department of Education making sure that these teachers get recognition for all that they've done for our students and our district.
Did they get any kind of prize or anything?
Well, they got a letter from...
I think Megan Morris is going to sing this.
I think they need a prize. Except, we don't have any money, so we can't give it to you.
Congratulations.
Did I even get a Starbucks gift?
Big smile. Smile again. Thank you. Well, Mariah Ullsbrook is now named Rhona. Arlene's now named Mary.
We'll wait until the ones that are leaving leave.
Yeah.
Hey, how are you?
Randy, you want to say a few words?
I see Randy Comer.
I know.
And Leanna.
Hello.
Hi, Leanna.
Good people. Good people.
Give me a break. I'm trying to get something up on my phone.
She looks like a good people.
As soon as everybody gets where they're going, I'll continue.
She looks like her mama.
Pass the notes.
If you're going to pass out money, you're going to have to give me some...
Okay, we've come to the public comment section of our agenda.
Let me remind each of you who will be making public comment that you have three minutes with which to make that comment. And Lynn, your name's on the top, so we're going to start with you, darling. Just say your name and address for the minutes, please.
My name's Lynn Jones, and I reside at 283 East End Road, San Mateo, Florida. And I started out my day being called in and told that I would no longer have my media specialist position next year, that I would be replaced by a paraprofessional. And it was not a great way to start my day, so I was allowed to leave work just to process the information. At first, I thought, hey, I'm a tough cookie, I don't need to leave work, I'm fine. And I got back to my office and decided that I really did need to go home. And when I got home, I didn't realize just how upset I really was, because this affects my whole family, because of, you know, where I might land next year, and getting her to and from school because of, you know, just trying to...
Logistics.
Logistics, yes, just trying to work everything out. So, it was very upsetting, and still trying to process all of this. And then I wake up in the morning, it's still a thousand-pound gorilla around my neck, because I have no idea what I'm going to be doing next year or where I'm going to land. And that's a very bad place to be in. So, I'm not very good at speaking in public, so I did write something, and so if you'll forgive me, I'm just going to read what I've written, that way I stay on track. "The administration's decision to eliminate," which I was not told that it was proposed, "the administration's decision to eliminate all media specialist positions in the county schools lays yet another roadblock in our children's path to knowledge and success. Poor communities with underperforming schools are where the opportunity and encouragement to learn are most urgently needed. Reading is the most critical skill for the ability to learn and encouraging the love of reading and learning, the best way to ensure full development of that skill. We all know that the performance of children in school is heavily dependent on what they do outside of school and the educational resources, opportunities, and encouragement they may have at home. Most kids in poor communities don't have collections of books at home or access to other educational media. They lack not only the access to this media, they lack the skills to know how to access it and to enjoy it. They lack the experience necessary to develop a love for reading and learning. I know from personal experience that my efforts in the library, which I've been a media specialist for 16 years, I've reached a lot of children. I see kids' enthusiasm for reading grow through our Sunshine State Reader Program, Florida Teen Read Program, and countless other such programs that we media specialists implement to encourage the love of reading. These programs work because they show kids how much fun it can be to read and learn, and they create readers for life, who will in turn encourage their children to read. This is how the cycle of poverty and ignorance in poor communities can be broken. For the kids with parents that read to them every night, like myself, many of you, they can provide reading instruction in a library of books and other media to enjoy and who encourage them in education, the libraries and media specialists provide access to and encouragement to expand their horizons and dreams. For the kids without these things at home, like so many of our children in Putnam County, we're the best chance they have for that needed opportunity and encouragement. With the skills they learn, develop, and improve in our libraries, the kids become better students in the classroom and in all facets of education. I know from personal experience that what I do makes a difference in the education of many of our students. When I see kids begin to devour books and see the pride of accomplishment and their confidence grow, they feel, as their skills improve, I know what I do counts. I know the rest of the media specialists have similar experiences and feel the same way. I have heard some justification of eliminating media specialists for years now. By following the example of Duval County, of course, a neighboring county of ours, that has no media specialists in their libraries, in fact, I heard that just last week from someone here at the district office. Well, Duval County has gotten rid of all of their media specialists. Well, Duval County ranks 45th in the state in education, and I agree, 45th place is better than the 65th place that we currently hold. But we do want to improve by emulating a school district that is in the bottom, but do we want to improve by emulating a school district that is the bottom one-third of our school districts? I believe a better example to follow is that of St. Johns County, which is ranked number one in the state of Florida and has fully-staffed media centers in every one of their schools. The idea that fully-staffed media centers in schools improves overall performance is not just a theory. It has been proven by research, such as that published in this month's issue of School Library Journal, which I have a copy for your review for consideration. In this study performed by the Pennsylvania School Librarians Association and the Education Law Center, there was a significantly higher percentage of students with advanced scores and significantly lower percentage of students who scored below basic levels in state testing in schools with fully-staffed media centers. It should be noted that this study compared school districts with libraries that were staffed 35 hours or more per week versus those staffed less than 35 hours per week, not those with no media specialist at all. In conclusion, I ask that you reconsider this decision to eliminate the media specialist position across the district. It may save a few dollars now, but at what long-term cost to the quality of the education our children receive? Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Next, I have Rebecca Cordova.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Rebecca Cordova, and I live at 126 Oleander Drive in San Mateo, Florida, 32187. And I am here as a proud parent, proud parent of four children in Putnam County schools, but also I work at the University of Florida College of Education, where I have spent the last 10 years teaching teachers here in Florida and across the country. So, I'm passionate about schools. I live and breathe schools and schooling. Public education is what I am called to do, but also being a parent is more of my calling as well. So, I'm in Browning Pierce Elementary School as much as possible, because I believe if we are to have strong public education, we need to be on board, we need to be invested with everything that we have. And for that, for me, that means research, it means writing, it means showing up. And so, here, I'm here today to show up, on behalf of the University of Florida and the College of Education, which I believe is a respected institution in our community, if I'm correct in saying that. And as a representative of the College of Education, I support everything that Ms. Jones and I have had the honor of having Lynn and Candy as media specialists. They have touched the lives of my children. But before I get to that, let me say this, that we already know, we are all here as educators, and we already know what the research says about literacy rates, what supports growth in literacy rates, and the importance of having media specialists and fully-staffed with expertise in the media specialist is really important. This isn't just a place that you can just have anybody coming in and supporting our children in our county, have access to media in ways they absolutely need to. In a county where we have dismal literacy rates, where many of our children don't graduate, don't access higher education, much of their access is through media. And so, it is our absolute obligation for every single child, not just those in accelerated programs, every single child in Putnam County to have access to experts in their media centers, so that we can show them the world outside Putnam County, right? We owe that to them, so they can make Putnam County proud, so that we can make our communities proud, and they can go and explore the world at their leisure and come back if they choose to. But these are avenues that we absolutely owe to our children. And so, as a researcher and a professor, I absolutely believe that, and we push it hard at the university. So, I'm here to actually model it in my community, where four of my kids go. And let me just say this as a parent, our media specialists touch every single child's life in that school, every single child. They help teachers build curriculum, they bring in speakers, they show children books that they wouldn't have otherwise, classroom libraries, school libraries, they open doors for children. We close them, I'll tell you what we're going to get. Because as a professor, I get to travel in schools all through this state, Duval County, St. Johns County, Marion County, Monroe, every district I get to go to. I've seen schools, I see them every day. I walk into a school where they have shuttered media centers, closed doors, books on the floor, children don't get to access them, they have one person that comes in once a week, maybe to check out books. This is not the same as an expert media specialist in a media center. I can tell you what, as someone who works at the University of Florida, PK Young Developmental Schools is our model to the state. There's no way they're getting rid of their media specialist. They know better than that. So, there's no way that Putnam County should allow for that for our children.
I reside at 212 School Road in East Palacka. Proud parent of two 4th graders at Browning Pierce Elementary, where I'm the Vice President of PTO. What I'd like to, I'd like to address this issue of media specialists and the importance to my children, all the children in the county. I want to relate our experience over the last five years at Browning Pierce. When my children started in kindergarten and first grade, Ms. Jones was the media specialist. The next two years, when they're in 2nd and 3rd grade, we had paraprofessionals running the library. In 4th grade, we were greatly appreciated having Ms. Bacon take the role of media specialist. I'm here to tell you, it's night and day difference, night and day difference. And to give you some idea, when we have a media specialist there at the beginning of the year, the reading counts, accelerated reader, whatever the program happens to be that year, they hit the ground running. Those kids have access to the computers in the library, they can go in before school, they can go in after school, they can go in with their parents, and they can utilize those resources that our tax dollars have already paid for. You have great library at Browning Pierce, I can't speak for any other place in the county. You have great, and that's partially because of Ms. Jones and Ms. Bacon, okay? So, the years that we had paraprofessionals, and it's not to degrade them any way, they were in there doing their best, but they're pulled off to do lunch duty, they're pulled off to load the buses, and as a result, you can't get access to the library in the morning, you can't get access to the library in the evening. The beginning of the year, where all these programs need to be in place, we were two and three months into their 3rd grade year before it was even set up where they could have an accelerated, accelerated reader test on the computer. That's the difference, that's what you're paying for. It's very important. We made taxpayer investments in all these school libraries. We need to have somebody that can run them and use them to the greatest value of the citizens and the students in this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have the consent agenda. I'll start with you, Ms. Gilyard, since you're on the end. Would you like to pull anything? No, ma'am. Mr. Buckles?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Cummings?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Jorgensen?
No, and neither do I, so...
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. No emergency items. We're living right.
Way to go.
Okay. Let's see, discussion. Is there any unfinished business?
Yep.
Under discussion for new business. I can't believe it. Board member reports? It's that time already?
Sure.
David, why don't we start with you?
I would just like to urge everyone who's still listening that is a media specialist that we do value and appreciate everything that you do, and we know that reading is a portal to all learning and that you do much more than just be a librarian, you're a media specialist, and you're the hub of activity of our schools, and we know that. Fortunately, we're going to be going through some hard choices coming up, and my biggest concern is that we don't, and I think the superintendent agrees, is that we don't force, have a reduction and force to where people would lose a job and certainly would stay employed. And if there is a way to work this out where it'll be of minimal impact on you, your family, and the children you serve, I am certain that Mr. Searcy and his staff will find a way to bring us recommendations to try to minimize any impact on the children. So, that's, other than Miley, who was here earlier with her mother, who was a high-impact teacher, my granddaughter, Misty, I mean, Miley, Misty's my daughter, who was a teacher, but Miley took 2nd in the state in the archery tournament, and I guess I'll be trying to go to Louisville to the national.
Oh, God, because I'm going to.
Well, you can't go.
I may not, now.
Anyway, that, you know, it's a, I listened, we didn't have enough time to really go into detail on the financial workshop, and I think it's a very doable goal that staff has set, but, you know, we're, they're, as they proceed in this process, it is good to let people know, but then, when you let people know that there might potentially or will be a cut of some type or some change, it is very upsetting to them, because I'm upset, like he, and I know how miserable people can be when they're told they're going to be in another area. So, we are empathetic, we do care about what you do, and we value you very much, and hopefully we can work out some palatable solutions. So, that's really all I have to say.
Ms. Cummings?
I would, I feel that as a board member, for, other than Kathy, I guess I'm the elder on the board, and this is our job. The budget and allocation is our job. And so, for the delegation to be amongst staff and not even have knowledge of any type of ideas or proposals is bothersome to me, so I'm asking the chairman to please set up. I don't care if we need one a week, we need budget workshops, because these are things that are our responsibility, that's what the state charges us with.
I've been saying that.
Well, that when, this is the problem, Kathy, when these decisions are made and it affects our allocations in this type of way, we are not notified, and we get phone calls, that's when it's like, wait a minute, we have to, we're in charge of the organizational chart, the budget, the allocation. So, I would say, starting next week, if we need a budget workshop with Rhonda once a week, then we have to. This is our decisions. When the newspaper and when the media and anybody that knows about budget cuts, guess whose shoulders it lies on, ours. It doesn't lie on the staff, it's just blamed on the state or the school board. So, if we're not 100% involved with this process, it's, we're not doing our job, we're not doing our due diligence as a board member. So, this miscommunication that's taken place has made me realize, Kathy, yes, 100%, you are right, and I agree with you about the miscommunication, and I apologize for not, you know, something like this happened to happen, that, you know, all these things that have been discussed, like, wait a minute, we've never heard of all these proposals, these, we're the board that makes the budget.
No, we don't make the budget, we usually get it like this.
Correct.
And approve it.
And if we're, we're having to make the tough decisions, and it is on our shoulders completely, and I know that...
Well, why hasn't that ever been done? Do you know? I mean, is that done by other boards where they work diligently to come up with the budget?
I've heard of several different ways it's done. We did try, Rhonda's been under Superintendent Townsend, we did try to have some workshops, budget workshops, when we were more like three in a row, that were very, very intensive, and it is, it's a lot of work, but it's something that...
Where we go over every item in the budget and...
Well, and...
I mean, because I'm ready to do it.
Yeah. For instance, these six items that the staff came up with, well, that's great, but there was 20 other ideas that we never heard about. What if we, as the board, decide, wait a minute?
We didn't hear about those two today.
No, we didn't hear about these. So, that's my point, is I understand brainstorming takes place, but when things are put on paper and it affects allocations, I'm saying the board is the one, the board is the one that does this.
Well, but I think statutorily, I tried to say this earlier, superintendent decides who serves where in personnel, and even if you have allocations, it doesn't mean he has to fill them. And if he doesn't fill them with whoever it is that you prefer, he's legally not required to give a reason because of potential litigation to the school.
Okay, but again, this is an allocation, and I'm not going to argue about it, we could talk about it in state statute another day, but all I'm saying is the board needs workshops about the budget, and immediately, not tomorrow, let's not wait to schedule it next month or next year. This has got to be, if we have all these things that are going to happen, then it's our, and it's our, it's our responsibility.
Ms. Cormany, I'd like to...
Absolutely, absolutely.
We know, we know. I would like to direct you, please, to set up next week the first of our workshops on the budget, please. Is that okay?
Yep.
Superintendent's one, we ought to direct, he's the secretary.
I thought she said Madam Chairman, sorry.
Well, Madam Chair is the one who sets up workshops.
He's the secretary, you have to have him put it together with it.
And I have to direct you to please set up a budget workshop for next week.
And, I mean, of course, remember, it's community listening, this is community involvement. If you guys want to speak, this is something I feel like it should be done at a time that the community could be engaged with it. The teachers, the union, I feel the transparency is necessary, and we got to do it in the evening.
Do it at night.
Absolutely.
I've been trying to say that about board meetings for the last moments.
Well, at, at least this, the budget hearings, people will come out for the budget workshop if we give them the opportunity. We don't have to give them the opportunity to speak at a workshop, okay?
Because they don't ever come to the budget meetings.
Like that one I missed.
Yeah, I know, they don't come to the budget hearings, ever. But it's, well, let Ms. Cummings finish her.
No, I was just gonna say, I really like a Thursday night, March 16th, from 5:00 to 7:00 or whatever it takes.
Well, I don't know if I like that night, because I have something...
If you're willing to be there, that's the week that I have four grand babies until 11 o'clock every night, so it won't be...
Okay.
And I'll be in Tallahassee on next week.
We can do them on Tuesday nights.
Okay, Tuesday nights. Or 4:00, but I...
Well, I don't think, I don't think we need to have a knee-jerk reaction, I think we need to just plan and, and, and I think, I know that, I know the super...
I don't think it's knee-jerk.
Well, I don't think the superintendent just woke up one morning and said, "We don't want any media specialists anymore, and we don't want..."
Well, we know we do, do they?
Right.
But it's, it's, it's something we're gonna work through, and if we can minimize the impact on these employees and find ways to do it, I think that's what we're gonna do. And as a board, I think we need to, we can get together and do that, but to say we're gonna meet every week, it is a busy time.
I just think it's too important for us not to be involved in it.
It always has been.
Absolutely. It is our job.
It is our job.
It's hard, but nobody likes it.
But it is, it is incumbent on us to, to have the recommendation to, to say, what is the goal to...
Well, I would say to do homework, all these 20 ideas or whatever that's been thrown out in these leadership meetings, email them to us and let us review them and talk and discuss and brainstorm amongst ourselves and then bring them back. We don't have any clue of what they may be, so we're...
There should have been a workshop.
There should have been a workshop for sure. So that's my point, is I'm trying to work backwards here because they've been thrown out, so let's, let's digest them and then have a meeting and say, you know what, I think this is an awesome idea, this idea I have a real problem with. And you're the same, you've had so much experience. David, you've cut stuff in the past that may have been the biggest mistake of your leadership, and then you cut stuff that was like the best decision. So, so we have an idea of what we're talking about.
You have a lot of information that you could share with us, is what she's trying to say.
I'm really surprised that you didn't know, I knew there was gonna be a workshop, and I'd talk to the superintendent, because I called him and asked him, but I mean, I don't know. If it's a two-way street, you could call and ask.
We, this was set up two weeks ago, or two months ago.
I'm talking about, what he was, I knew he had a goal of, of the schools 10%, and I knew that, you know, they were gonna look at different things, and he, he wanted to sit down with me, and I didn't get a chance to do that, to go over a set goal, but I mean, it's, I instigated the call, and you've got two sets of dynamics.
Well, I do think there's been miscommunication, and I do think we need to work on it.
We should do a better job of that, yes.
Absolutely.
And I think he's, the superintendent is committed to, to that.
So Rhonda's scheduled, she's the most important piece of this puzzle, so we have to get with her.
We do have a, we have a workshop already...
We do it at night, I apologize. You know, if during the day, I'm a regular, that's another problem.
But I can tell you...
During the night meetings, that's when...
Right.
I prefer the daytime meetings, but I will tell you, anytime you, you change people, even if you save their job and you work hard to keep their rate of pay the same, they're not gonna like it when you're, when they're out of their comfort zone, and there's gonna be some, from some very unhappy folks, but that's part of the process, it's, it's not a lot of fun to go through.
Can we at least try the first meeting at night, at least to give...
Can we try Tuesday, the 14th?
I'll just say, next week.
Oh, not...
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
What about the 21st?
We have, we have a workshop scheduled that on the 21st.
The little 30-minute one, right?
Yeah.
After the board meeting.
It was two, started at 2:00 on the 21st.
Oh, at 2:00?
That's the transportation workshop.
I wasn't aware of that.
So I gotta be, it's 2:00?
Say again, Thomas?
21st.
Okay.
We really want...
I think, I think if we plan on a 30-minute break, and then...
Yeah.
That's fine.
Is that 5:30 or 6:00?
Yeah, 5:30 or 6:00, whenever, I mean, some meetings end at 4:00 and some meet at 7:00.
So just meet 30 minutes after.
If we can, if we can say, legally, somebody has to check that out, instead of saying 6:00 PM, we can say 30 minutes after the...
Our public voters could say, "Budget workshop to..."
Following the meeting.
30 minutes after the, the regular meeting ends.
Kathy, you remember...
But we don't know what time that'll be.
I know.
You remember how we had, you remember how we had the workshop recently with the School Board Association? And we had it kind of small, and we could sit around and we could talk around a table, that's a lot easier. If you're gonna do financial things where you're gonna wanna chart, you don't wanna sit up here and, and, and do that.
We did it that way last year.
Can we just say 5:00, because, like today, we ended at 4:00, we don't know that next time we're gonna end it.
We're not done yet.
We weren't even...
Well, I mean, I know, but it's gone pretty fast today.
I'm sorry, I couldn't...
We didn't need to...
Kathy's got a really long board report, so...
No, I don't. Am I up?
So 5:00 PM on March the 21st, you're gonna have a budget workshop.
Yes, and if we have to, we can recess the meeting.
Yeah.
But that way we could still have the 2:00, uh, could we still, David?
I'm just thinking, I'm, I'm thinking I might, I may be in Tallahassee, I don't remember.
You go the next week to Tallahassee. We're not gonna schedule something that you've got to be somewhere else.
Didn't mean to make you stomp your feet and yell at me like Nikki does, but it's okay.
Was that excruciating face you made?
Well, I was trying to think of when I was supposed to be in Tallahassee.
So is anything happening at 2:00? No.
Well, do you still want the transportation workshop at 2:00?
We could still do that.
Because there's some issues that need to be addressed.
Yes, let's get it all. Yeah.
Okay, so we have to be here too.
So 2:00 transportation workshop, 3:30 board meeting, and then 5:00?
We're gonna earn our day.
And for me, 9:12 are expulsions.
Oh god, you do have a long day.
Could I ask for some direction on, from the board, and you can email it to me on where you want this first workshop to go?
Yes.
I could spend 24 hours a day up until that day, coming up with budgets.
Any suggestions?
Just one suggestion.
I want the dollar, I want the dollar figure that is the goal that you've set to cut, and we're gonna need somebody to, and it's probably already been done, to calculate who's going out, how many vacancies we're gonna have, so we'll make...
Retirement, attrition, yes.
Drop, whatever, you know?
Right.
Figure, and can roll over several year period, is, you know, is...
Rhonda, I recently attended with Sandra the forum, and one thing they said to get your finance director, to give you graphs, like that pie chart, it's, it's easier sometimes to understand where you're at with salaries versus, so if you, and I know it's just a push of a button, once you get the numbers in there, you just ask for the charts, so if you could do that, I would appreciate it. Am I up?
And the other thing, I just, there are six items that were proposals, I didn't know if there was any other ones that were discussed that would, I would like to see them all.
I would mind seeing all the, everything that was discussed.
We'll give you the whole list.
Okay.
Now, Ms. Jorgensen?
Well, thank you, I was very sorry to have missed last week's meeting, I was literally on my way out the door for the meeting, and my husband said, "I need to go to the emergency room," and he had a heart attack, he had a silent heart attack again, which is no pain. He had a triple bypass 17 years ago, so this was one of the bypasses, is closed over with scar tissue. But he's doing well, we're going back to the, we're going to the cardiologist on Monday. There's nothing harder than making budget cuts, whether you're in the school system or you're doing your own at home. No matter what we do as a board, it doesn't matter what we do, even if we do nothing, you're gonna have people calling you upset. The only thing, we, we have two jobs by law as a board, two. One is to handle the money, and the other is to make policy, which is equally as important. Want to talk about workshops? By law, every two years, we are to have gone over all our policies, ho, ho, ho. As it is, we get a pile this high and we just approve them, I mean, but those are only two jobs by law, is to set policy and handle the money. So these budget workshops, I've been whining about, like I said, for many, many years, I, it's the board's money. The taxpayers have elected us and entrusted us to educate their children with that money, and make policies that further the education of the children. So I'm off my soapbox now, thank you. That's it. Jane?
No, Ms. Gilliard.
Oh, yeah, Ms. Gilliard.
Oh, Ms. Gilliard, sorry, Sandy, we were just gonna leave you right out of it.
That's okay, all right, I've been left out. Okay, I'm just, I'll be attending, keep putting them beautiful, meeting on the 17th of this month, and they're getting ready for a big cleanup day, and so I'll come back and hopefully we'll get everybody involved in that. And just regarding what the superintendent proposed, and that is the key word, proposed, we don't want to displace anyone, cut anyone out of a job, and most certainly those that impact our students, like the research was given to us here. But when we have to make a decision, we're gonna do it with everything in mind and due diligence, and do it as if we were in the position, and the last thing we want to do is cut personnel. So we'll, along with the superintendent, look at every other option we could possibly look at.
Thank you. I'd just like to start out by saying that I'm very proud of the Palatka High School Panther basketball team for making it to the final four, and they did great, they were really overwhelmed in Lakeland, but they worked very hard to get there, and it's a great group of coaches and a great group of kids. You know, this is just the hardest thing I've been through as a school board member, having to make cuts. Candy knows how important media specialists are to me. I taught English for 30 years, and reading is my particular passion. I'm not ever found without a, a book to read, and as an English teacher, I know how important those resources are to students and to teachers. You know, if there was a magic wand that I could wave to give us all the money in the world, I would, and I'd say, "We will never get rid of a media specialist." But I promise you this, like Ms. Gilliard, we will look at every, every possible thing before we make a decision.
Well, in a case of Lynn and, and Candy, people like that, as we go through this process, we may find that longevity plays into some of these superintendent's recommendations, so we, we'll, we'll get there, but we'll figure it out. Should I sure don't want Candy and Cindy mad at me?
Or Lynn.
Yeah, Lynn, they've all been on, got on me before, so it's not...
I taught those kids.
Well, you taught me, I was...
Yeah, well, I didn't teach you much.
No, you didn't. You did a bad job on that one.
Board attorney?
All is well in the legal department.
Well, I'm glad it's all well somewhere. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, once again, I want to apologize for any miscommunication in, about our budget proposals or allocation proposals. And with that said, I want to make you aware, we are meeting, we schedule meetings Friday at 9:00 with our reading coaches, ask all of them to come into the boardroom, and I want to meet with them as a group, and basically go over our rationale and just talk about, you know, what we're proposing, and answer questions they have. So we want to be as transparent as possible with that group. And also at 1:00, we're gonna meet with media specialists. So we're trying to be very open and, and would invite you as well, if you'd like to attend.
Well, we can, I mean, is that gonna have to be...
Do we need to advertise that for them, to attend that?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, so you're welcome to attend, it's just gonna be a formal meeting, question, answer, and...
Nine and one.
9:00 for reading coaches, 1:00 for media specialists.
I won't be able to come, so I'll...
What time is it?
Because you've given up a Tuesday.
And as we, again, as we go through this process, I will try to do a better job keeping you abreast of what we're doing to make sure that, you know, you don't get caught off-guard. I did text you afterwards, but should have made you aware ahead of time, so we will definitely keep you abreast of what's going on. Want to mention, good news, last night we had our first, actually the college hosted a collegiate high school meeting for our parents and students interested in being considered for the collegiate high school, and as you know, that's with Palatka High School and Inarken High School, and they had a tremendous crowd there. I didn't get the count, but they had their auditorium, was packed.
Where was it?
This was at the college, and these are parents that are...
Valhalla?
No, it wasn't at Valhalla, it was in Building S-203, which is a...
That biology classroom?
Yes, a big auditorium, but there was no seats available, so it was pretty packed. So there's a lot of information given out, and also tonight at 6:00, for, in the west area, there will be a same meeting held at Price Middle School at 6:00, same thing. Would encourage anybody to go out there for that meeting, and that is required for them to be considered for the collegiate high school. Want to also mention that we, that is just one choice that parents have for their children. We have Cambridge, Cambridge is alive and well, QI Roberts, and we've also expanded Cambridge to the Crescent City area, starting next year. So we're just trying to give parents and students choices, and with that, we did send letters out to eligible students, and I, I did want to make a correction, we did a call-out today, but on one of the letters that went out to our sixth and seventh grade students, QI Roberts was left off that letter as a choice, so we did do a call-out, just to make them aware that that is a choice, but when you go on the computer, it is on the computer, so it was an oversight in the letter that was sent out. So we did try to rectify that problem. In just a few minutes, I'm hopping in the car and heading to Tallahassee, and I'm gonna attend some, some budget or some, some appropriation subcommittee meetings with the Senate and the House, and trying to get a better handle on, you know, some of the funding issues, then I'll turn around and come back home tomorrow, and then I'm going back next week for almost all week. So they are, the session is going, and I'll try to report back, you know, any news that I hear, you know, as far as funding goes.